Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order.
Augubray.
Here.
Collinin.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
Ramara.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion and second to approve the minutes from the July 5th, 2022 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 5th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Public comments on agenda items only.
Yes, sir.
I'm Alan Thompson. I live just behind the proposed parking lot. And I just wanted to say before you guys voted on anything, I don't have an interest in giving up any of the east side of my property. If I have to move the pool, that's what it's gotta be, but I don't have any interest on giving up anything on the side of my property. I just wanted to say that before I, before you voted on anything. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, my name's Art Papanato. I'm discussing the same piece of property. I've got a couple of issues right now. Maybe they fall to the city, maybe they fall to Chamblin on what the contractor did during the demolition. During the demolition, the building fell onto my property. And then as the, as that building was removed, the property lines became obscure. And then as the contractor spread gravel, I do believe he spread gravel onto my property. Chamblin went in there about a month ago and put some paint onto that parking lot or that property. I believe because of those paint marks, that that is the issue, that the gravel has been spread onto my property. The bigger of the two issues, but also about spreading the gravel. During that rainstorm we had, all the excess rain came off of that property onto the east side, onto the east side of my property. I have never had standing water on the east side. I've had standing water on the west side. I have pictures and video of how close that water came to flooding my basement. So I want to know if Chamblin has a rainwater retention plan for that parking lot. The rain used to come off the building, go down the alley to the storm sewer in the alley. Now, all that water's been diverted to my property. Like I said, I have video and, and pictures of how much water I had on my property. I've never had an inch of water on my patio. I had an inch of water on my patio. So maybe that has something to do with Chamblin and how they need to design that to retain the water off of that property. But it is getting dumped onto mine. And later this year, and for sure next year, spring, I'm gonna have some serious issues. So I asked that Chamblin go in there, restate that property line, so I can see if that gravel is on my property, so I can reinstate my property the way it was, the grass, so I don't have to worry about putting rocks through my windows and my siding. And then, like I said, I, you guys, somebody needs to discuss about rainwater retention on that property. Thank you.
I understand your concerns and we will talk with our engineering firm and get back with you. Moving on. I need to approve bills as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Approve second quarter billing permits in the amount of $624,869.
I'll make a motion to approve second quarter building permits in the amount of $624,869.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Number. Number eight on the agenda is approve 1189-071822 and ordinance amending section 5.102, period 010 of the municipal code of the city of Oglesby relating to video gaming terminal fees. And. With that, over the, the next three years, the fees will raise $100, if I'm correct, $125.75, and then 50 to 250. Need a motion and second to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve 1189-071822 and ordinance amending section 5 dot zero, sorry, 5 dot 102 dot 010 of the municipal code of the city of Oglesby related to video gaming terminal fees.
I need a second. Guess we'll table it until we can figure out what's wrong. Approve 1190-071822 and ordinance amending section 5.92 point 030 of the municipal code of the city of Oglesby relating to adult uses. And what this does is very simple. The ordinance, I guess, cancels out any of the outdated illegal ordinance that were in the, are in the city code. And it, it is unlawful for any person to do any indecent or immoral act or to appear in any public place indecently or immorality, dressed or to make any indecent exposure of his or her person.
This ordinance eliminates the definition contained in your existing ordinance relating to crossdressing, which would be unconstitutional in our opinion, so. I did send Amy two different versions of this. One just changed that ordinance. The other one changed a similar reference in your adult cabaret ordinance. It does not add the bar definition to the adult cabaret ordinance, which I think is something the mayor would like to see done. But the first ordinance I sent you, Amy, has both definitions corrected to comply with constitutional appropriateness, in my opinion.
Do we ever find another municipality who had a more recent?
I think Belleville has the best ordinance. It goes on for quite a few pages. It would retool the whole ordinance. And if that's what's something you want to consider, I think that would be fine.
It looks to me, when I read through it, it just looks very dated.
The whole thing is very dated.
Yeah. And that goes back to probably when those were even enacted, wasn't it?
Do you want us to just get you a whole new ordinance and wipe out that whole section and start to talk about that?
I'd like to see this Bennett, whatever one you just said, I'd like to see a whole updated one. I mean, there is a lot of references to a lot of outdated things in there, not just the dress of a man versus a woman or stuff like that.
We just corrected the unconstitutional ones that the gentleman brought to your attention when he was at the podium here a month or so ago. But if you want to consider a whole new indecent exposure ordinance, we can consider that.
Personally, I'd rather not just put a Band-Aid on it and just get something that we can go into the future with. But I'm just one person. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I'd like to see a, a total fix. The overall purpose of our adult use ordinance, I don't like how it's worded. It, it reads as if it's a way the city can approve those types of things, as long as it's more than 5,000 feet from a, which doesn't exist. So it reads like it's a way to, to approve it, but in reality, it's a way to deny all those. And, and then you have all the issues about saying what type of wear is appropriate and everything. I, I just think a revamp would be probably a good idea. I don't know how complicated the one you have there is, but I'd be interested in looking at it.
So it's with the 5,000 feet, which is nowhere in Oglesby, right?
I know.
Essentially.
So we're gonna change ordinance that doesn't really matter anyway.
Well, unless you don't put the 5,000 foot limitation in there.
Yeah, so once we take that out.
Yeah, well, to me.
As long as it's in there.
I think if we just make one.
It's covered. I'm gonna go out.
I'll be honest, all we need is need to make one that says two words, no nudes. And I think it's solved, but.
Well, that's basically what, what this does. You know, it doesn't go into specifics. It's a common sense way to address it.
I think it's still, even, even though it solves the, the manner of dress between a man and a woman, it still leaves a lot of stuff open for interpretation. Like, I don't think it fixes the impersonator issue, which we've had an Elvis impersonator, we've had a Prince impersonator come to the city. We've had fire twirlers in the city for, for a concert of some sort, and that's technically considered a go-go dancer. I mean, so there's a lot of issues that we, that I don't think is really addressed, addressed. I mean, if that, if that ordinance doesn't solve our issues, then I guess the only other option would be to Band-Aid what we have to.
Well, I guess my recommendation to you from a legal standpoint is to correct the unconstitutuality in your ordinance by adopting the one with the two definitions in it tonight, and then you can start to consider revamping the whole ordinance. But if you don't want to do that, that's up to you. But that's my legal recommendation to fix the known problem.
I, I would agree, but we tend to have a problem of, of talking about things and then not circling back to get them solved. Is my only concern. So I, I just feel like that's, that, again, if that's your legal recommendation, I'm gonna go with it, but.
It is my legal recommendation for tonight, but I will email you this language and see what you think about it tomorrow. And if everybody agrees, we can start heading down this path to completely revamp that whole section of the code.
One point, on the agenda, it says 5 dot 92 dot 030. Technically, that is the adult use ordinance. That was in both of the ones that was supposed to be the language. But technically, the portion that we're, you're recommending that we fix is actually not in the adult use. It's in the, I don't know what section it's called, but it's, it's 9 dot 16 dot 010.
There's two, Jason, that I sent to the clerk. One is just 592.
And one is two of them.
And one is both of them.
But if we're actually going to approve one.
I think you should approve the one with both of them.
So you think we should approve the one with both of them?
I do.
So we'd have to change the way this is written here.
9.16 point 10, 1010, and 5.92 point 020 are the two code sections.
It was my understanding that the 5 dot 92 dot 020 doesn't include the constitutional problem, though.
It does.
What part of that was the constitutional problem, I guess?
There was some crossdressing issues in that language too, Jason, in the existing ordinance. That's what Andrew told me anyway, and that's why he threw this one in there as well. But this does not change that definition to include a bar, which was the subject of the original conversation about this issue. It does not do that. It just changes the unconstitutional language in both of those definitions.
So everything else stays the same and up in this limbo area of?
We're still in the limbo, aren't we, then?
But you've corrected the constitutional problems with your existing ordinance, which is why I think you should go there, but it's up to you guys.
Okay.
It's already written. We might as well approve it. We're not gonna pay any more to get it done here.
But I will email the whole council the preferred bill, the language that I like in looking at them.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that as long as we are going to make a conscious effort to try to solve the rest of the issues in there. Technically, it's two sections, though, for the.
Correct.
For the motion. Anybody else have any discussions on it, or I can make it that, I guess? I'll make a motion to approve 1190-071822 and ordinance amending sections 5.92 dot 030 and 9.16 dot 010 of the municipal code of the city of Oglesby relating to adult uses.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin. Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Number 10, approve 1201-071822 and appropriations ordinance for the city of Oglesby for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2022 and ending April 30th, 2023.
This is an ordinance you need to adopt at tonight's meeting. You have to adopt it in the first fiscal quarter of the year. All of the numbers were prepared in conjunction with a couple of recommendations from some of the commissioners and in your auditors working with Amy and I over the course of the last month or so. Joel really puts all these numbers together and then I just pull them into the ordinance.
All right. Any questions, concerns? All right. I'll make a motion to approve 1201-071822 and appropriation ordinance for the city of Oglesby for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2022 and ending April 30th, 2023.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin. Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Approve 071822R, a resolution authorizing the permanent transfer among city funds.
This is also that came, something that came out of your auditor's visit to all of your accounts for the last fiscal year. And he comes up with recommendations every year about what you can transfer from one fund to another to bring them into balance. And these are the recommendations he made to do that. I think Amy is poised or maybe has already made those recommendations that the auditor gave her.
All right. I will make a motion to approve 071822R, a resolution authorizing the permanent transfer among city funds.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin. Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Approve quote for upgrades for parts and resin material for the iron plant.
So these next four are the items that we talked about at the last meeting. We, we put all four of them up as if we're doing, no, there's two projects. It's the valves on Walnut Street, and then the other stuff is the, with the leaky tank at the iron plant. I think what we put on, on file was if we were gonna do both tanks pending the question about the ARPA funds. We did find out that we can indeed use all ARPA funds for these types of things. Seeing how we haven't used any of the ARPA funds for infrastructure, and we were going to do that, I think it would be actually a good idea to use the ARPA funds for all four of these next items.
And I think you could take them all together if you wanted to, Jason.
They're, they're all, two of them are two separate quotes of Parkland County painting, and the other two are purchases from two separate companies. Do you want me to do them all at one time?
If you wanted to, rather than read through them and go through all the votes on each one individually. I think the council knows what they're about because they were discussed at the last meeting. I think you could make a motion to approve the quote for upgrades in 12, 13, 14, and 15 all at one time if you wanted to.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the act of doing that?
No.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the quotes for upgrades for parts, resin materials, the iron plant, recoating and tanks at the iron plant, the EZ valves from Core and Main, and the EZ valves from UECO.
Second.
Augubray.
Aye.
Collinin. Curran.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Ramara.
Aye. Next is the discuss and take action regarding property located at 663 North Columbia Avenue. It's a piece of property that the, the individual passed away and his brother passed away. And we can purchase the property and then turn around and, and how we can sell it to somebody that's, that's interested in it. The house is dilapidated. It has a garage. It's overgrown. But we can purchase it for $818. It would get an eyesore out of the neighborhood and give somebody an opportunity for some, for some property. I'm not quite sure how to, what the city would have to do is advertise it and secure sealed, sealed bids.
Well, there's two different ways to sell it. You don't have to do anything to acquire it, except to agree that that's what you want to do, Dom. You know, the 818 is the purchase price, but I assume there'll be demolition costs involved too.
Well, I'm sure there's demolition on, on top of that, but it's $818. And that gives us the piece of property free and clear of all the taxes and liabilities.
I was gonna say, I'd wanna check on taxes, but maybe you know that already, Dom.
So I looked it up today, because I just found out about this today, and it still says it's owned by an individual. I assume that's the individual that passed away. Because I do see, I do see that taxes haven't been collected on it since 2017. But it had a few red marks in there, and I didn't know exactly what that meant, if it was owned by the county at this point in time.
That means that they've been sold to a tax buyer, Jason. And if they don't redeem them within three, three years of the first sale, that tax buyer would have a right to petition for a tax deed. So when was the first one? 2017, Amy, did you say?
Couldn't the county have those right now though too, or would it look different?
No, they've, they've probably been sold, Tom. So that, that tax bill would have been due in 18. They would have been sold in the fall of 18. So the fall of this year will probably be the three-year mark where that tax buyer could petition for a tax deed. That tax buyer usually pays the subsequent year's taxes too, so they probably paid the 18, 19. We'll have to see. But I'd wanna double-check the taxes very clearly and make sure that tax buyer hasn't petitioned for a tax deed already. Because I don't wanna put you, see you put any money out if you're not gonna get the property. You could acquire it, I think, Dom, at this point in time, but I think that window is closing pretty quickly.
Well, it, it seemed to me that it's for $818. We could get a piece of property. I, I do know that if they demolish, demolish the house and garage, it's gonna cost them, what, eight, nine thousand dollars?
I would say at least, and depending on what the structure is.
But it's the idea, we'd be cleaning up a blighted property on Columbia.
I get that. And once you acquire it, again, you have two choices as to how to sell it. One is you can get an appraisal, and then you have to sell it for a certain percentage of that appraised value. I think it's 80% if I remember right. The other way is that you can advertise for bids in the newspaper. You have to advertise three times. You have to advertise at least 30 days before the meeting where you're gonna open the bids. And then you can decide to sell it to anybody that you want, as long as a certain percentage of council agrees. And I think it's two-thirds. But you would have to pay for the advertising costs or pay for the appraisal to sell it, is essentially where you are.
The concern I have is anytime we're gonna take a piece of property off the tax roll. I guess I'm a little confused when it was for tax sale. Is that pinned to a certain individual or a state right now that, that is responsible for those taxes?
Sure. Probably the decedent who died and his estate or brothers or whoever hasn't been paying them. But again, those taxes that haven't been paid have been sold to a tax buyer, Jason. And that tax buyer is gonna have the rights to petition for a tax deed for the limited investment he has in purchasing those tax bills for the last three years or four years. And then he will own the property if that's all successful for the payment of those taxes.
The question I have, if we demolish that building and incur those costs, what's the value of that lot, do you guys think? Any idea what it would be?
I was, I was looking to just, there it is. You take, you take care of it with the stipulation that the, the property has to be upgraded or demolished or whatever in a, in a 12-month period.
So they would be doing the demolishing?
Yeah, I was not looking for the city to do it.
So, so what happens?
Just trying to figure out what's going on here.
Let, let me ask you this. What happens in the event that we acquire the, the property for 1800, or 816 dollars, whatever it is? And, and with the idea, the good intentions of someone to purchase it and to clean it up, but then nobody purchases it.
And now we look like the bad guy because we're not doing anything with the blighted property.
Because now we own a property.
I, I'd like to go back one step because I find it kinda hard to believe that the person who owns this property and isn't paying the tax bill is somehow gonna come up with the money to pay for the demolition cost.
They're not going to. They're not gonna do anything.
I thought that's what I understood you to say, Dom. Yeah, they're just gonna sell it to you.
Whoever buys the property from us will tear it down. Which I don't.
That's gonna be a hard sell, too.
Okay.
So that's my, so that's my concern of us purchasing a property, taking it off the tax roll, and then it never resells.
They're not paying taxes on it now.
Yeah, but we have at least our hooks into somebody to, to pay them, right?
Well, no, the taxes have been paid. They've been paid by the tax buyer.
But that, the guy that bought it can, isn't there a way to get rejected and say, no, I don't want it, and just returning the right to buy and stick it on the counter?
He doesn't have to petition for a tax deed. He can say, you know, I, I looked at this property. I don't want it. He can just walk away from it.
Yeah.
But he's not gonna get his tax money back. I can tell you that. Who is?
So when you say the taxes were paid, are they paid? Are the taxes paid in a different way? Because when I look on, on the county's website, it just says zeros there.
Can, can we reach out to him to find out what his intentions are with this build, with this property, if he were to get it by default?
The tax buyer?
Yeah.
Probably gonna try to sell us the taxes.
They're very difficult to talk to, Derek. I can tell you, just, just from my experience, they deal in high volumes. I mean, sometimes particularly some of the ones I've dealt with in the past, there are people there I know that will call me back. But generally speaking, I call and leave messages and really don't get much of response. I'm not saying that would happen here. You know, we can certainly check into it. This is really the first time I'm hearing anything about it, and I can communicate with Amy tomorrow and check into it further, but. Yeah, it's, you know, it just depends on, a lot of times it's a neighbor situation, you know, they own a bigger garage or something. They might be interested in buying the property. We have another municipality we represent, and they have $12,000 into a piece of property that they bought, advertised, got bids on. The bid was $7,000. They're $12,000 into it. But the city had to do something about it because it was a fire. The house was trashed. It was an unsafe situation. The owner didn't have a dime to do anything with it, so they agreed to just give it to the city, and the city demolished it to correct the safety issues. But they can't get their money out of it.
I'd like to see this table until we get more information. Are you okay with table on this, Dom, until we get more information on?
I'll check into it, Dom. Amy, you and I'll talk tomorrow about it, okay?
Okay.
We need a motion to table it.
I need a motion, second, to table it.
I'll make a motion, we table this till next meeting.
Second.
Augur Bay.
Aye.
Collinan. Curran.
Aye.
Yudis.
Aye.
Vavara.
Aye. Next, discuss and take action for future parking lot located at two forty-six Eat Walnut Street, Ousebe. We've discussed it. My recommendation for it is to, uh, to do with less parking places. We have twelve and no exit to the alley. I just, I just think I, uh, it'd be wrong to do that to the residents there. And, uh, if we're gonna make a parking lot, I would, uh, I would hope we take into consideration, uh, the people that live there.
Can I make a suggestion that they park it east and not to the west pointing at my house, my living room, my kitchen, my bedroom?
Sure, we'll try to, uh, put up a, uh, a fence and, and, uh, some shrubbery to, uh, reduce that as much as we can.
Thank you very much.
So, th- there's only two schematics I've seen. I've seen the one schematic that the engineer did up to where it exits to the alley. The only other schematic I saw was one that was a possible, but we'd have to get eight more feet of the adjoining property to make a turnaround.
I think the original and we saw, Jason.
That's not gonna happen.
Probably not, that's what I'm saying, I've only seen those two. I haven't seen one that you're talking about where it's an enter and exit.
I think we have, Jason.
We have?
I think the first one that was presented to us, what, there were a couple, uh, parallel parking spots on the one side and the rest were straight in, I believe there were twelve, is it? Okay, I think that was the very first one that we saw.
I don't remember seeing that. I remember, the one I remember I saw where the ones were parallel off to the side was to exit the, uh, the alley. So if there's a schematic that, that offers to not go to the alley.
Maybe that wasn't one.
I don't, I don't remember seeing one like that, that worked in the existing space. So if that exists, I, I'd like to see that. So I, I haven't had a lot of conversations about this outside of the meetings. I've had a total of three residents talk to me and they're all on different subjects other than the alley. People say we need to have a parking lot down there, somebody says we shouldn't be getting, one was a past council member actually, uh, and said we shouldn't be buying a, a parking lot to supply for residential parking. And then the other was the concern about, like the gentleman just said here, uh, tonight. So I haven't really heard anything specifically from residents complaining or talking about the alley. I do know that our engineer did some research, uh, and, and had the usage amount for, for there and, and I haven't seen anything that said there was a problem with exiting to the alley. But I mean, if there's a good schematic out there and a great option that doesn't involve having to go to the alley, I'm, I'd be interested.
Yeah, we'd lose, we'd lose some parts, parking spaces, but we wouldn't have to go through the alley.
This one has twelve spaces straight on, Jason.
And it says exit to alley.
Right, so you just stop it here, Jason, and these people will back out and come out this way. I don't know that you'd lose these, uh, four extra parking places to do that. Whether you back out this way or this way, I, I don't know how you're not gonna get those cars there either way, honestly. But this is just twelve straight parking places.
Yeah, so does that take it down to eleven then? Because they have to back up to be able to get around?
No, I think they would, you'd probably get rid of these and they would just back.
I'd be good as an engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a minute spot.
So this is the one I saw and I look at this one, this is the exit to the alley.
He's right there, why don't you just ask him?
Yeah, so Jim, this is the drawing you gave me, I think maybe at the last meeting even. It's got twelve, uh, facing west, those, that could be adjusted if we're not gonna put any on the east, I guess. But would, would you be able to have the four extra spots on the east side? That's what I thought. Right. So you'd just lose the four parallel stalls on the east side? You could park the cars on the east or west side and then there'd be twelve, twelve spots there, right?
Wasn't there something about a handicap accessible stall as well though? Which, which would take it down to eleven then, right?
Is this sidewalk ramp and entrance there already, Jim, or is that something? That'd have to be created so it could be moved east or west, right? Okay.
So just to confirm, there is not a, there is not a, uh, a diagram of one that was specifically drawn up for?
No, I believe I was wrong, Jason, if that's what you're saying.
That was my point, I don't think I've seen.
If you want me to say that out loud, yes, I believe I was wrong.
I'm just trying to make sure that there's not one out there that I've somehow missed.
So twelve stalls is what you're looking at, I guess, guys?
Twelve stalls.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a schematic of, of how this is going to work.
What about the, the drainage too, is that something we have to look into, Jim?
Oh, that's a good, that's a good.
What, what are we gonna, do we have to do anything?
Last time we got five inches an hour.
Yeah, I know, well, that's a good question, so. So. Anyways, so I wrote down with the gentleman and said during the public comment section about the property lines obscured, I didn't know exactly what that meant. Did, did we somehow drop our building across property lines or something like that? When we did it?
I think he's suggesting the gravel.
I think the gravel is what he's suggesting, I rolled over.
I believe the contractor's insured.
So it sounds like a contractor issue. Since, since we have our engineer here, the one thing, the other thing I highlighted that he said is something about diverted water. To my knowledge, cause we've dealt with, I'm gonna have to talk about this in light, uh, we'll, we'll be talking about this a little bit later about diverting water. My understanding is you are not allowed to divert water onto somebody else's property. Is there some way that we change or modify the, the property to where we purposely diverted water to the property? Or is it just because it's lower?
The, the, the grade on the dock, the, at, the grade of this gravel right now is diverting all the water to the, to the west onto my property. The, uh, the rain used to come out the back of the building, go down the driveway to the alley. The driveway is now covered with, with dirt. So now all, all, the only place that water can go is to the northwest corner, which is right on my property.
I guess this is, sorry, I should've just.
Property has to be created so it either retains water or has a storm sewer, divert that water to the storm sewer.
Let me rephrase my question, let me ask the city engineer.
Investigate this, Jason.
Do, do, to your knowledge, are, are we diverting water to that property, I guess? Okay.
I'm, I'm sure before anything is, is done, we'll double check and make sure that where the property lines are, uh, that, that we will not be diverting water to, to flood your property. If we can get that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're diverting water purposely to somebody's property, that's obviously a problem we need to solve. But like I think someone made a mention earlier, we had five inches of rain in under an hour and as far as I've known, nobody I, I've talked to that live in the city, we've had that much rain ever that quickly. We've had rain about that size in twenty thirteen, but never within an hour, so.
But I'm sure the city engineer will address that in, in drawing up plans for the parking lot if you decide to improve it.
So is it, it, would it be safe to, to say we, to table this until we get a print? Assured that we're not, uh, draining water down into, uh, Mr. Pavanato's property and, uh, could do it right?
Well, yeah, the, the diverted water thing is new today, that's first I've heard of that. But I mean, more importantly, I'd like to see a, a print or a diagram of what would work.
But just so, just so Jim knows, you're eliminating any possibility of going out the alley? So he would just be drawing the park, parking lot to the front?
Right.
How does everybody feel?
I'm in favor of that, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Well, I'm just thinking there's no sense in them doing it twice. They've just been beating this thing to death, so.
Well, I would agree.
My only two cents on that is I have not had a single resident come to me or, or come publicly or, I, I guess somebody did say something about they don't want their lights hitting their thing, but I mean, even pulling in the parking lot's gonna be a problem with that. Uh, but I haven't had a statement, an email, a voicemail, or a public comment from any resident saying that's a concern. And I do have information from our engineer that says that it should be safe and he recommended even that we pull in out of the, and I mean, and it's gonna make more parking, so that's my only two cents with it, but I'm gonna go with whatever the council thinks.
And for what we're spending, I think twelve or sixteen, you know, what was the estimate? Something to think about is what we're spending on this as well. There's four more spots, for what we're spending would definitely make more sense.
I made comments last meeting.
Okay.
Patty made comments last meeting.
Okay.
About concerns about going out through the alley. It was during the public comments at the beginning of the meeting.
I remember.
Okay.
This, Patty, this, this is, this.
I just have a question about this parking lot, parking spaces. All right, this is a parking lot by Memorial Park. And you're in one way and out the same way and they're straight and I think they have, not mistaken, twelve parking spaces and one of them is a handicap. And that parking lot doesn't look like it's been getting through the block yet, so I don't know why that can't be done. It was one way and out the same way.
I, I'm, I'm not an engineer, I can't answer that question. I think we've gotta settle that it'll be in and out the same way. And we'll see how it, how our engineer can, uh, uh, draw up, uh, a plan with, uh, with all the safeguards for everybody. So with that, I'll table it and.
Dom, I don't know when I was with the rest of the council that necessarily everybody's on the same page with, when I, when I heard Tommy speak and Jason speak, sounded to me like they had a different thought than maybe what you and I had. So just wanna make sure that we're all transparent here and kinda know which direction we're going.
I, I mean, I don't know how else to put it, I mean, first of all, I, I wanted to do, if we need a parking lot, fantastic. But I was on favor of the idea that we should look to see if we could build something else there. If that's not what the council wants, no problem. Then if the next option is that we're gonna make a parking lot, we should be looking to see if we can get the most amount of parking out of it. So changing, I mean, sixteen's not a very big parking lot in the first place. And you take it from sixteen down to twelve, down and out possibly eleven. And the only thing that's holding that up is the idea of exiting through the alley. I understand that residents might not be happy because they don't want vehicles exiting out there, but it is an authorized alley and it's been redone, we completely redid it, we spent a lot of money from the motorfield tax funds last year. I, and we had the engineer evaluate it and does not see a problem, there's not a safety issue, there's not a hazard. I don't know why we would want to shorten that up. That's my only concern. If we're gonna de-build a parking lot and try to help out as many businesses and residents as we can, won't we wanna go with the most amount?
Well, I think you gotta take into consideration the people that live there. I sure the hell wouldn't want a, uh, an exit from a parking lot eight foot from my front door.
You got an alley near by your house? Biggest question, is there?
I live on an alley, it's great, love it. So.
Two pieces of property that have to be parking concerns, they're both properties that can develop their own parking lots. If you look behind the businesses that are, that are in issue, they have their own property that can develop for parking. Why does the city go and give you this expense? And it's only been in more expense.
Why, why have it downtown? Let's just go all out here, why even have it downtown? We talk about how we wanna help downtown, we wanna do this and that and then we're not gonna do anything.
And, and one of the things I'm learning with this is no matter what you do, you try to help one group of people, you'll always have another group of people that'll oppose you. And you're trying to find the solution that solves the problem for the majority.
If we can't get a concession, we'll work on it and move on. Old business.
Mayor, I think the one you wanted to talk about under old business was about the meeting we had with the Heritage Field residents?
Uh, yes, that's been a problem for, um, ton of years. I do have a meeting scheduled with the, uh, president of the, uh, Townhouse Association. I don't wanna resolve one problem and create another one. But, uh, I'm at least pleased that, uh, everybody is trying to work for a common sense solution and, uh, and hopefully we can, uh, come up with one.
Yeah, I just wanna add on, so it was last Monday, uh, the mayor, myself, the city engineer and about half a dozen residents met here first. We, we had a discussion about some of the legal stuff and, and some of the concerns about setting precedents and then we took a field trip down to the area, we walked the property. We, we discussed a lot of different options out there and stuff and I, I will say it was nice to be able to talk with the residents and I feel like that was a lot, lot less contentious than this parking lot issue, but it was great to be able to talk with, uh, residents that, that really wanted to see if we can find some solutions. Where we left it was, the engineer was drawing it, we, we came up with two plans. One plan was a, was a cheaper option that would, would handle pretty much the, the day-to-day storm water that you would have. Uh, but if we ever had a rainfall, like a massive storm, there's only one other option that was much more expensive. The engineer, last I heard, is going to be coming up with some plans and some estimates for that. There was no consensus or agreement of who was gonna pay for anything yet, we just talked about some options. So once we get the prices for that, hopefully we'll have a, another discussion and bring that to the rest of the council.
Okay, move on to, uh, public comments.
I have a comment, Kathy Frederick, I have a comment on two of the issues. One was a comment made from the audience that why can't the businesses make their own separate parking lot? How many businesses uptown have made their own parking lot? The businesses uptown use the parking lot directly across here and they use the parking lot across from the police station. So why should any businesses down there have to be, I'm for the parking lot, whether we go through the alley or we come out, I don't care which way. And I can understand the residents' issues, but we do need a parking lot and it shouldn't be one resident. I agree with his water problem should be fixed, but he shouldn't make the comment that the businesses should buy property or use their own to make their own parking lot. If they're, we can't use a public parking lot down there, then none of the businesses up here should be able to use these public parking lots. They should be for other, you know, we gotta be fair. And the other one was, I am going to, not that I always agree with Jason, but I am going to be one citizen who is going to make sure that the council gets together and revamps the ordinance for adult usage. I myself, and maybe I'm a bad person, I was at the adult thing, there was no nudity at all. And I understand there are some older people on probably, other than the mayor, probably the oldest person in here. And I really enjoyed it. I might be gonna be seventy-six this month, but I'm not dead yet. I am not dead yet and I don't think if you're not having nudity there and it's in a private room that there is anything at all wrong with having a show if there's no nudity, which there wasn't because I was there, so I'm just saying. I'm seventy-six the end of this month, but I'm not dead yet. So I enjoy seeing a show on occasion and I don't think, unless you can find the nudity, but believe me, have you been up and down the main street?
Okay.
The way some people are dressed is worse than anything I saw in there. So those are my comments.
Thank you for your comments, Kathy. I, I, I agree with your sentiment on, uh, I, I don't, I don't like the idea that the city is, have any part of, uh, policing or trying to set standards for manner of dress. I don't, I think as long as there's not nudity, I think that's pretty much the simplicity, we should go with it, so.
I do feel very strongly that, uh, we've got some outdated ordinance that, uh, that address that, that we have to address it. I will publicly disagree. I will publicly disagree with you, Kathy. I don't think nudity and getting down to a G-string. I don't need that at Walnut Street in Oglesby, I think that's. We have a difference of opinion, thank you.
Maybe we should all take it in one of these nights and. See how everybody feels about it.
He said maybe we should all take it in one night, see how we feel about it.
Field trip for research purposes.
Kathy, I don't feel that old either.
Come on.
And that's my difference of opinion.
You're welcome. Commissioner reports?
I have nothing to report tonight.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
All I have is that, uh, we will be hosting a substate for junior league this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, at the Rudy Gudolfy Ball Diamond. That's all I have.
Those public comments were entertaining. Uh, it does help break up some stuff I, I have to talk about here. Uh, I do have a few things, I'll talk about the easiest one first. Um, on Friday, there was a storm that came through. Um, there was three trees that went down that landed on wires. Uh, one of the trees was so large, it actually cut through the tree wire insulation. Tree, wires that are near trees, they have what's called, they're made tree wire, so they're thicker, they're meant to be protected against that. The tree was so large, though, it actually caused a rub in the insulation. And when it broke through the insulation, it caused the insulation to catch fire. So, uh, that's why there was about an hour power outage that occurred on, uh, Friday. Uh, the, the rest of the trees they're able to get down without taking the power out, but we had to take it down to make sure it got safety. That's the best thing I have to report on. Two other issues. Our water, our water wells that we have in the city of Oglesby. Uh, well three is twenty-eight hundred and twenty-one feet deep, well four is twenty-seven hundred and ninety-five feet deep. The contractor that, that works on it believes that Oglesby has the deepest wells in the entire Midwest. Um, I don't know why they're that deep. Um, the pumps actually only go down about four hundred and ninety feet, where they actually get the water from. Um, our well three, over the last, uh, five years, has been reduced capacity. Usually only one of our pumps runs for twelve hours a day, uh, to sustain the city's water. The well three has to run for about fifteen hours. So we brought someone in to take a look at it, hoping it was just a computer problem or a control issue or something like that, cost us about five hundred bucks. The concern was if it's something wrong with the actual pump, just pulling the pump itself is thirty thousand dollars. Well, they took a look at it and there's one of several problems. Uh, they believe it to be a hole in the pipe. If there's a hole in the pipe and that's what's causing the problem, it's a bigger concern. The pipe is four hundred and ninety feet down and it actually holds the pump. If for some reason that pu- pole were to get larger or to shear the actual pipe off, the pump drops twenty-eight hundred feet, or down to twenty-eight hundred feet, which were a bigger issue. So, um, with that, it's a sixty-nine, it's approximately a sixty-nine thousand dollar fix. Well three was done, uh, seven years ago and well four was done seven years ago as well. Um, the warranty on the pumps are only a year, they're expected to last every seven to ten years. Well four is a line shaft pump, so it's expected to last ten to fourteen years. But I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that because probably in the next meeting, I got the quotes in today. If I would've had them last week, I would've put them on the agenda so we can get this fixed. Um, there, there's really no way around it, so that's unfortunate. It's, it's one of the things that if we don't fix, uh, and then the other pump goes out, we'd be in a trouble where the city doesn't have water anymore. That's a real problem, so, we're gonna get that fixed. Uh, the next issue, um, last week I was able to go with the city engineer and my electric, or my street superintendent, uh, with the massive storm that we had that had five inches of water, there's two culverts. There's one on Walnut Street and one on Hickory. They're in very, very bad shape. Um, they're starting to wear away. Um, I do not have the engineering estimate of how much it's gonna cost to fix them. One is more important than the other, 'cause it's a little bit more damaged. But the point is, all the people that live on Arbor, Hickory, and the, the west end of Walnut Street, they don't have any other access out. There's not another road for them. If, if those culverts were to wash out, they can't get to their homes. So, it's obviously a priority, uh, as soon as I get the engineering estimate. I did receive some calls from them, uh, from some residents out there that has looked at them. Um, so we are working on the issue and I hope to have a plan within the next several weeks. Last item to talk about. Um, last meeting we had was, um, we had that five inch rainfall and we had a meeting the next day. There was some people that had some water issues and with the drainage and, and there's all kinds of issues with that. However, as I, I did report this on Facebook, 'cause people were really concerned, a lot of people can, conducted, contacted the city. There were several residents that had sewer backup issues. And a lot of that was due, not to any fault of the city. Um, the city, actually, when the event happened, they went around, they checked all the lift station pumps, make sure everything's up. They'd actually check them all every day. But they checked them again after all the rainfall was coming, to make sure that everything can handle stuff. Well, about eight hours after our meet, eight, ten, twelve hours after our meeting we had last Tuesday, and about Wednesday morning, we found that the west Walnut Lift Station, both pumps were seized up. Um, and I've mentioned this in the past, but I'll mention it again. Please, please do not be throwing diapers, rags, socks, catheters, towels, mop heads down the toilets and down your drains. That will eventually tear up pumps. Usu- so every other month, I've mentioned it here, I'm having to spend ten to fifteen thousand dollars on pumps, I hate, I hate to have to do it, but we have to. Um, usually a pump will go bad and then they have to fix it. But because there was so much material, so much water, and the pumps had to work so hard, both pumps got destroyed at the same time. So, that caused a lot of problems for some residents there. Um, we're giving some fixes to the, the, the pumps are fixed, we're gonna get some more sensing equipment to, to solve it for the future. Um, we're also looking to, if we get the, uh, the ARPA request by the, uh, the county, to get the, um, Clark Street, uh, issue fixed, that will help alleviate some of that, because it won't be, uh, there won't be a combined sewer anymore. So, a lot of things going on, but I, but I ask again kindly to not be throwing things down the, uh, the drains that don't supposed to be there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I've got a few things here. We've been talking about the solar site, uh, that'll start construction, they're looking to start next March, be completed in, uh, September. And I have to get with Pat on, uh, interconnect agreement and net metering. City of Oglesby has sent a letter to the US Department of Congress in support of IVCC's building a three-point-five million dollar ag center on land that will be annexed into the city and served with city utilities. That's electric, water, and sewer. The city will host a food truck car show on August thirteenth, twenty-two. There will be music in Seneca Square, the city will not have a bar. We will allow those attending to have open liquor on the street and in Seneca Square, so long as it is in cans or plastic. Please work with the bars, it's bar establishments to make this a fun event. Walnut Street will be closed four to eight, music till ten. We need ten sponsors for cars, for the car show crews. It's a hundred dollars apiece for trophies. And, uh, we encourage, uh, the bars to help us get it done. Uh, IVAC, Illinois Valley Chamber of Congress, uh, Commerce will host an after-hours, uh, on eight twenty-three, twenty-two, from four-thirty to six-thirty PM at Seneca Square. Approximately twenty vendors will be there. August second and ninth, Dickerson House Foundation will host an ice cream social at six PM with a municipal band concert followed at Seneca, uh, at seven. City is looking to host, uh, a municipal band and we've been having trouble with, uh, securing dates with them. And the city is looking to host a movie night at Seneca Square. That's about it. Need a couple commissioners sometime, if, uh, Cully and, and Terry would stop by and see me sometime, I'd appreciate it. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Alvin Ray?
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
Aye.